Call the meeting in order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no refuge, justice for all.
Welcome to the June 3, 2025 Pulse Falls City Council meeting. Shannon, please note all council members are present. And under ceremonies, announcements, and appointments, we do have a couple of announcements. This Saturday is National Trails Day. The Friends of the Pulse Falls Community Forest and Core Climbing are hosting a volunteer volunteer trail pruning project from nine to noon at Camellan Park Trailhead. All are welcome to join. Tools and tools and gear will be provided. Details on how to RSVP can be found on the city's website, postfalls.gov. And the Pulse Falls Police Department is hosting Coffee with a Cup on Tuesday, June 10, from nine to 10:30 at Anchored Coffee. Stop by for a casual chat with officers and staff, and first cup is on the PD. And I'm happy to address this next item, which is the recognition of city prosecutor who was appointed to magistrate judge. And it's an honor to be able to read this, and I do it. It's kind of bittersweet by the same token. Let me read this and then I'll, well, actually, I'll start out. So it's my 12th year as mayor, so I've been on the magistrate commission replacing Mayor Larkin. So it's my 12th year. And we've gone through and interviewed many, many judge candidates during that timeframe. Eileen McGovern interviewed last time, and it was very close. And when we saw her name on the roster for this, there's two positions opened up. I had my own feeling, but I was wide open, open-minded. And when they asked for comments, I told the other commissioners, I think there's 12 or 13 of us, I said, I really want to say bad things, but I can't. Because I know just what quality work Eileen has provided the city of Pulse Falls. And so she was elected to one of the magistrate positions, and I'll read this thing here. But I think it's of note that one of the commissioners came up to me afterwards and said, you were right. So the interview was very well. But the city of Pulse Falls bids farewell and offers its warmest congratulations to Eileen McGovern, who has been appointed to serve as a magistrate judge. Since joining the city as Pulse Falls City Prosecutor on May 31, 2021, Eileen has been a cornerstone of our legal team, bringing clarity, professionalism, and heart to every case she touched. Eileen's tenure with the city was marked by his steadfast commitment to justice, community safety, and fairness. She handled a wide range of criminal matters with diligence, always seeking resolutions that balanced accountability with compassion. Her courtroom presence was calm, firm, and unfailingly respectful, which earned her the trust of law enforcement officers, city staff, defense counsel, and the judiciary. Her impact was not limited to the courtroom. Eileen fostered interagency cooperation, mentored younger attorneys, and helped build a prosecution team known for competence and integrity. She championed fair solutions, particularly for vulnerable individuals entangled in the judicial system, and she consistently ensured that the city's legal position reflected both the letter of the spirit, both the letter and spirit of the law. Prior to her work with Pulse Falls, Eileen served as an assistant city attorney in Court Lane, handling misdemeanors and fractions and civil matters such as public records requests, and is deputy prosecutor for both Cootney County and Bingham Counties, specializing in drug, domestic violence, and mental health court cases. Her education, JD from the University of Idaho College of Law, 2006, and affiliations with programs such as the Idaho Academy of Leadership for Lawyers and the Idaho Volunteer Lawyers Program reflected deep, ongoing dedication to public service and access to justice. As she moves on to her next role as magistrate judge, we are confident that her compassion, legal insight, and fair-mindedness will serve the people of Idaho well. While her daily presence will be missed at City Hall, her contributions to the legal culture of Pulse Falls will endure. Best wishes on your judicial appointment, and we thank you for your years of outstanding service. May this next chapter be as impactful and rewarding as a legacy that you leave behind. So please join me in congratulating.
Very briefly, I know you guys have business to get to. Just wanted to say thank you very much. I've just been really honored and pleased to be a member of the city of Pulse Falls. That glowing statement, I think, was drafted by Field, which speaks as much to his rhetorical ability, maybe more so than to my actual accolade. Thank you, Field. Working with Mayor Jacobson, with Warren Field, Shelley, with the Pulse Falls Police Department has just been a real honor, an incredible opportunity, and I thank you for that. So, thank you.
Congratulations again, Eileen. Best of luck.
Thank you, Mayor.
So just so everyone knows, if you're keeping score, out of probably the last six magistrates, seven maybe, two have come from the city of Pulse Falls. We're gonna have to figure something out. You'll do well. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Any declaration of conflict? Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the May 15, 2025 City Council Workshop. Item B is minutes from the May 20, 2025 City Council Meeting. Item C is payables, May 21 through June 4, 2025. Item D is ARC subdivision master development agreement, SUBD-24-10. Item E is Foxtail 11th Edition Final Subdivision Plaid. Item F is disposal of surplus vehicles. Item G is Foxtail 12th Edition Final Subdivision Plaid. Item H is Briner Annexation Denial, that's ANNX-24-7. Item I is Alfred's Annexation Reasoned Decision, ANNX-24-10. Item J is Alfred's Annexation Agreement, ANNX-24-10. Item K is Steckman Annexation Reasoned Decision, ANNX-24-9. Item L is Steckman Annexation Agreement, ANNX-24-9. Item M is Early Dawn and Zero's Annexation Reasoned Decision, ANNX-24-1. Item N is Early Dawn and Zero's Annexation Agreement, ANNX-24-1. Item O is Pole Line and Zero's Annexation Reasoned Decision, ANNX-24-2. Item P is Pole Line and Zero's Annexation Agreement, ANNX-24-2. And item Q is Sewer Line Damage Settlement with Scarsella Brothers.
Any questions on the consent calendar? You entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion seconds, further discussion. Rule call, please.
Sig leader?
Aye.
Plu?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We do have two public hearings tonight, and I did not mention, but if anyone wishes to testify during a public hearing, there are forms on the podium in the back. Please fill them out and turn them into our, sorry, over here, our clerk, and we will let you speak. So the first public hearing tonight is a Pleasantview Annexation Development and Annexation Agreement Amendment, Addendum One. And with that, I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't normally pitch public hearings, but here I am in front of you tonight. This is a project that I've had my fingers on at various times since it was initially annexed a number of years ago. And so I thought I was probably the best person to explain to you what we're doing tonight with the Annexation Agreement Amendment. So as a summary, this property was annexed back in 2022 as part of a planned economic development project. A company was intending to relocate a trucking facility and build a train, trucking, transload facility where they would offload product from trains onto trucks. Due to increased construction costs, essentially, the project has been shelved for the immediate future. The agreement that we reached back in 2022 called for both the city and the applicant to build certain public infrastructures by 2024 to meet their planned opening date. Given that they're not opening, those dates are not going to be met. And so we needed to amend the agreement to change those dates. And what we've done is to essentially sub back into the agreement our standard language that we have for all annexation agreements, requiring the developer to install the infrastructure when they need it. Because Idaho Code requires a hearing to amend a development agreement, that's why we're here tonight. And that's the quick summary. More quickly, I'll go through the infrastructure that we are intending to build. The applicant was going to build an 18-inch water main along Pleasantview Road, as well as a sewer force main reaching up into Pleasantview, along with traffic signal and roadway illumination at the intersection of Pleasantview and Grange to serve their trucks coming out of their site. As part of our project, we were going to build, there was a lift station, as well as some additional sewer infrastructure. Our anticipated cost was about $3.3 million. Those funds were largely coming out of annexation fees that we charge to provide services and studies for newly annexed areas, as well as enterprise funds to essentially pay for oversizing costs. We essentially pay for those upfront because the developer can't be required to pay for more than they need, and then we capture that on the backside. So those amounts were to be reimbursable from the urban renewal district. And again, the remainder of the funds were grant, by grants or by the applicant, to fund the rest of the infrastructure projects. As I mentioned, the amendment removes any specific projects, funding, and timelines because we don't know when they're going to be done at this point. We've added back in the city's standard infrastructure clauses, which essentially means that they have to extend the services to meet their property when they want to develop. And that's kind of it. If the amendment is approved tonight, the addendum is signed, will then record it, and it'll be binding on the applicant and the city from that point on. So, any questions?
Questions, Warren?
Is there any net shift of sort of cost burden onto the city from doing this?
And if anything, it's releasing us from obligations to build infrastructure that we were intending to build that we're not going to now have to build.
Okay.
But we do need it built, right? Because we have a lot on this being built down as of view.
At some point in time, it needs to be built. The question is, is when? There's no immediate driver for that to be built today. The biggest change for us is, the trigger was in 2024 to have this infrastructure completed. And because the applicant wasn't moving forward, those dates are not happening. We will eventually need to put in infrastructure up the Pleasantview Corridor that likely will be done with some combination of development dollars, developers coming in and developing sites and pulling that infrastructure north as they go. We may end up looking at having to do some annexation fees at some point. The big driver probably at this point is, when does the school site that's up in that neck of the woods need service? As we see here today, that we're 10 years plus out. Every time we ask, it's 10 years out. So we're, the school population isn't growing the way it was previously.
What street is the public worksite on?
Hargrave.
We're not waiting for the Pleasantview development for the public site?
No, we're not. So that will, the initial phases of that development will have a septic service.
At what point in 2024 did we know that we weren't going to meet our contractual agreement?
Oh, gosh. So we've had check-ins with the applicant ongoing ever since 2022. And so it's been probably last summer sometime when they told us that they were not moving forward.
And we waited until we were already in breach of contract to talk about it?
No.
No.
No, we've been talking to them consistently. Sometimes it takes time to get them to execute documents and get them back to us so we can get them on an agreement.
I kind of, I'm kind of struggling with this request because it seems like we were supposed to have it done six months ago. We knew that it wasn't going to be done before the end of 2024, and part of probably allowing this company to annex and then come in was that there was going to be benefit to the residents by putting in this infrastructure so that other things could develop. It's the point of having the URD as well. But now we're talking six months after it was supposed to be finished, and we're asking to change a contract agreement because we didn't meet the agreements that are in the contract. And I'm just, I'm hoping maybe for more information that lays the story out in some other way that I can be supportive of. These development agreements, I think, are really important because I whine about them all the time and ask for things in them all the time. So to have one come back after we haven't done what we were supposed to do in the contract and just ask to change it because it wasn't done, I know something about that gives me a lot of heartburn.
And I guess the only thing I can say to you is, it wasn't done because there was no need to do it. We're not typically in the business of spending money just to spend the money. We're spending it towards a reason or a goal. And in this instance, the whole reason we entered into this agreement was to get this facility online sooner than it otherwise would have been. Because when they changed their mind about locating on this site, there was no reason today to spend those dollars to put that infrastructure in place.
Because they're the only business or person in that area at all that would need, that would need this infrastructure?
So the infrastructure we're building relies on the infrastructure that they're building.
Which is more of my point, is the infrastructure that they agreed to build for us, that now they don't have to build, that could potentially have other benefits to either other businesses or other projects in Pulse Falls. But now that they don't, now they've decided that they don't need it right now, then we're not going to ask them to build it, even though it could have other benefits.
It could, I suppose, but I think it's kind of offset, it was contingent on them coming to that facility. And the grant dollars, they're not going to be there to create the jobs to land the grant dollars. The whole package doesn't make sense if they don't relocate. And so the dollars weren't there. The other piece of this is, again, the construction costs were significantly higher than were anticipated in 2022. So our funding towards this project became just a portion of the total cost, and they're just, the financing wasn't there to complete the projects.
And the reason that we weren't talking about it in June of 2024 is because they didn't have, they didn't submit the paperwork for us to amend the contract?
So we've been working to get the documents amended for probably six months at this point, and we have had updates with council during workshops talking about, this is coming, that we're going to be having this amendment before you.
Oh, I don't remember any of those conversations. Still, six months ago was the end of '24 where they wouldn't have been able to start this project at 20, at the end of '24 and meet their contractual agreement. It would have had to have been started in '24 sometime much earlier. And when we saw that that wasn't happening, we knew that this was going to need to be amended, and it wasn't. I just, again, it's the contract part of it where someone agreed to do something, and now we're coming back after it's already been not done within the timeframe and saying, well, because it wasn't done, and because they don't want to do it anymore, can we please change the contract to reflect that? And I think that there is, there's some sort of like logical fallacy, maybe that's not the right term, but there's something within that, there's a precedent that I don't like, that I'm not, that I'm not comfortable with. But someone else can ask questions or wax on.
I think it's normal. You've got a developer coming in looking to build a project, and we enter an agreement with them.
Yeah.
Things don't always go as planned. We don't need that improvement right now. So in this case, why would the city invest our dollars for a project that's not going to happen and down the road when that whole area develops? And, and we do have to put in our, our portion of the infrastructure, we'll do it at that time. But again, it's not something that was buried under a bush. It was something, excuse me, something that they've been working with these folks on. And it does take time. And so to me, it's, it's a normal situation where a project was supposed to go forward, and they opted not to, and we need to modify. And the fact that it was six months ago and you've been working with the, the potential land, or the landowner on a potential project, again, it does take time. And they could have flipped the switch and said, well, you know, maybe we are going to build it. So I think this is just a normal step in trying to bring things current.
So is there, is there a reason that we're changing the language to meet just normal infrastructure requirements instead of changing the language to say, when you choose to develop it, then you will still be required to build these, these specific things that you said you were going to build?
I think the answer to that is, there's a decent chance that they never built on that site. That if you kick that can out to one you build, it may never happen. This language now mirrors essentially the agreements that we have in place all down that corridor so that the first person that starts building has to start moving that infrastructure across their frontage.
So I guess what you're saying then is, they potentially may never build. So then when they go to sell the property, that whoever purchases that property will be bound by the language that's in the development agreement. And we want to take the specifics that this developer agreed to out of the development agreement so that they can more easily sell that piece of property.
So whoever buys this site is bound by this agreement, and when they want to develop that site, they'll need to bring infrastructure to their site.
And I don't think that that's, I think that that is disingenuous and not in the keeping with the approval that they received in 2022. But I'm often in disagreement with everyone, so.
And it's just me?
Yeah, no, that's, and that's fair.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
I think it's a valid point. The flip side of it is that the city was also bound to build infrastructure. And as we had talked about with the kind of urban renewal district there falling apart, we don't want to spend our dollars building what we had laid out in that either. So there's some benefit to us too, if I think, for getting rid of this, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Absolutely.
But we're being reimbursed for the money that we would spend, if I understood your slide correctly.
Not all of the money would be reimbursed. Again, portions of this were funded out of our annexation fees. Some of it is, we would end up potentially being reimbursed once the developer was fully reimbursed by the urban renewal district. If the, if they don't come and build the increment to pay themselves back and then pay us back as well, we would not get reimbursed. So you could potentially be out in the millions of dollars for building infrastructure and not have a return on that investment because the business hasn't landed and the increment hasn't been generated to pay back that, that amount of money.
And the alternative would be to sue the developer for not building what they put in the contract, in which case they would sue us for not building what was also in the contract. What would be the possibility of success to compel the developer to build that infrastructure that was in the development agreement?
Pretty limited.
Why have a development agreement at all if we change it when we don't do what we agreed that we were going to do?
For me, in this case, it's kind of a, it's a no harm, no foul. So there was a grand vision to have this project drive come in and really, you know,
Kickstart?
Kickstart the whole urban renewal district, get the, get the sewer lines, everything else up the road, so hopefully spur further development. At the time, also, the school district was thinking, well, we're going to need a new school in five years. Well, that was five years ago. Now they're saying it's 10 more years, so that need is gone. You know, literally, nothing's happened to that property. It hasn't cost anybody any money. It doesn't cost anybody any money to back out of this contract. The dates are already passed.
Does that, that doesn't, that's not bothersome at all that the date, that, that we're not talking about this before the date came up? That we, that we didn't amend the contract when we knew that it wasn't going to happen instead of it already not happening?
They were talking about, they were talking with the developer about it, trying to, trying to get it resolved and bring it forward.
And I suppose it could have happened, it could have happened sooner. I think prior to the point where the developer said, or made the decision, we can't do this, we can't make it pencil out, then this is really the only resolution that makes sense for anybody. If it was still in limbo, then, then it's, okay, move it out to 2027. Okay, now we'll move it out to 2030. Okay, now we'll move it out to, but if they don't, if they don't have the money to build the project, they sure don't have the money to put in the infrastructure that, that they were going to put in there to build that project. And we have no need to spend the taxpayer monies to put it in there either. I get what you're saying, it's, you know, okay, if we're already, you know, the date's already passed, why are we just voting on this now? I'm not sure that it makes a material difference. There could be a situation in the future where it might. So I, I think that's probably, that could be a source of concern in this particular case. Nobody's out any money. It's not happening. We, we had a discussion not that long ago about potentially closing this district anyway because of this. So we'd have this, this weird, everybody is in breach of contract thing hanging out there that doesn't really serve anybody. So since the, my impression is that this is probably never going to get built. So, and if it does get built, they're still, if they're the first one to, to develop along that corridor, then they are still responsible for their portion. And also too, this releases the urban renewal district from having to reimburse them for anything they do. So if nothing's going to happen, probably the prudent thing to do is clean it up and and move on, but.
Okay, so it can take the liability off of the urban renewal district that we're looking at closing, which might be a benefit. I mean, I still have a problem with the fact that it, the contract says it should have been done six months ago, and those are projects that take months and months. So we would have known in like February of '24 that it wasn't going to get done. So I think that that would have been the more opportune time to talk about this contract change. But if it is something that lessens liability of an urban renewal district that we're looking at closing, then that seems reasonable to me. The other parts of this are not reason enough to change the contract for me.
So and, and Council President Malloy is exactly correct. We were talking to the applicant, call it every three to six months, checking in, and they were, for the longest time, saying, well, we're, we're going to be delayed, we're going to be a year out, we're going to be this amount out, until we knew that they weren't moving forward. Our assumption was that we're amending the agreement to change the deliverable dates. It wasn't until last summer, essentially, when we talked to them, and they said, it's, it's probably never going to happen, that we said, okay, then we need to revisit the agreement. How are we going to do that? What does that look like? And it's taken from that time till this time to get the agreement completed and back so that we could put it in front of you. And we've talked about that, it's probably predating you a couple of times. We also talked about it at our urban renewal workshop three months ago, that this was coming.
Any comments? No, other than the fact that I know since I've been here, I remember hearing conversation about it more than once. And with commercial construction, if the, the costs are too heavy and it's just not going to happen, it's not like we're going to twist arms and say, no, now you don't have a choice. So I don't know who really to hold accountable. To me, it's, it's a situation that it just makes sense now, change the language, and we move on and hope that it gets developed. Warren, is this a staff report? Is this the, are you the applicant? Are we the applicant?
So we are the applicant. This is, so this is the staff report, and from here, you can take public comment on the proposed change. Again, the change tonight is pretty limited. It's going from build infrastructure by X date to build it when you need it down the road.
I would make one comment on this, kind of to your point, is, these processes do take quite a long time, and this is not the applicant's intention when they originally proposed this product, project. This is probably the worst outcome that they could anticipate back in 2022. So I can kind of empathize or identify why they would wait until the very, you know, what we would deem as the very last moment. Because even if they decided in the middle of 2024, knowing that their requirements were not going to be met by the end of the year, and said, hey, you know what? The stars have aligned, and we're going to continue with this project, there's still an out for them to request for an extension to the contract for those. So it is a thing of, you know, come February 2024, they say, well, you know, if we, if we don't start now, it's not going to happen. I don't think is a very reasonable stance to take and say, well, you should have canceled it then, because there's still a lot of changing dynamics. And I think from them, as an, from an investor standpoint, they still had a really high desire to, to make this happen. You know, like I said, this is probably the least desirable outcome for them as well.
Sure, and I think it's important to be a business-friendly environment. My concern are the optics of when we make contractual changes, especially when we're talking about building in Pulse Falls, which is something that is a hot topic for everyone when we're talking about who builds infrastructure and how we pay for it, which is something that we have to consider. And big corridors like this, like who is putting all of that in and who is taking on those expenses? And then when, I, I remember this, this public hearing, I was here for that, there were opinions about it. And so when we have a builder that comes in and promises certain things and then isn't able to make good on them, I, I appreciate what you're saying, and it probably is the worst possible outcome. But from a resident's standpoint, anytime we're going to change a contract that we have with the private sector, I think it's important to be judicious about why we're doing that. And I don't mean to come off contrary to you, but I, I think that it's important that, that we ask as many questions as we can and make sure that it's laid out appropriately because sometimes these things do have a different optic when you're sitting on the other side of this room. And, and so I appreciate that everyone else up here understands so much of the construction and the business aspect of it, but it is a contract. Some, two people said that they were going to do something, we're past the time that they said they were going to do it, and now we want to change the language in that contract on a very, on a very basic level. That looks weird, and it sounds weird. And so we, I just appreciate the time and the answers to make sure that we can get to the bottom of it and really talk about what the benefits and risks are of doing it or not doing it.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to testify?
We have none.
That'll close the public hearing. Counsel, deliberation.
I would move to approve the Pleasant View Annexation Development and Annexation Agreement Amendment Addendum One, A N N X dash zero 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 six dash 2020.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Plou?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stig leader?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next public hearing tonight is real property exchange southwest, excuse me, southwest corner of Mullen Avenue and Lincoln Street. Open the public hearing.
Mayor and counsel, Bob Seal, community development director. Um, I brought this to you a month ago to talk about the declaration of our intent to exchange real property, um, and tonight is the public hearing for that. Um, as a reminder, um, this is the consideration for exchanging of the property, um, is a strip of land, it's 0.2 acres, in exchange for, uh, an, an easement over a water line that trends, transfers over the property. The adjacent landowner, uh, is looking to develop this parcel, redevelop it, uh, in the near future. As part of that, they started looking at access to that rear, um, parking lot area and had this strip of land that went across, uh, ran across that area and wanted to be able to have some kind of permanent access and easement over it of some form. Um, in further discussions and research, we found that it was a, uh, a strip of land that had been dedicated to the city, uh, in 1980 by the John, by John C. Young. Um, today, it is owned by the John C. Young Family LLC. Um, as I noted, it is, uh, going to be redeveloped, um, and they will be looking to potentially put a, a new loading dock in the rear. That is something that we kind of discussed at the last meeting. Um, and that if, uh, if it does go in that location and they need to move the water line, we will adjust the water line easement as appropriate during that time period, but for now, that water line, uh, cuts through the back of the property. Um, so as you can see on this map, um, it shows the proposed exchange, um, which is the land that is essentially, when it's owned, it's owned by the city, but it is strictly limited to water line location and maintenance and the use thereof. Um, so we have no, nothing, we have no other use for it. The water line does not go through it. We have no plans of putting a water line along that portion of Mullen, um, so it is essentially no value to the city. This was further on the, uh, the history that I kind of presented last time and kind of just, just touched, touched on as well. Um, so we're kind of looking to, uh, release it back to the original grantor, essentially. Um, I believe that it's in, I'm hoping that the council will find that is in the best interest of the city, uh, because it also returns it to taxable land, and that is essentially all I've got on that, trying to keep it short and sweet.
Any questions, Mr. Seal?
More?
Thank you. I, so.
It's a public hearing, so there is.
Is there a proponent that wishes to speak, or?
There is no proponent. I am, we, we, we proposition that this is what is going to happen, so.
Shannon, anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
Close the public hearing. Counsel.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Was that last month or the month before? We just?
May 21st.
Yeah.
I appreciate the cheat sheet field. I move that the City of Post Falls proceed with the exchange of real property as presented, finding that the exchange is in the best interest of the public and consistent with Idaho Code 50 dash 1403, uh, two, and authorize the mayor to execute the transfer documents.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stig leader?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
For the record, uh, I did get prepared, motion to approve and to deny, so it wasn't like I was just handed something saying, here, approve this. There was, there was two motions.
I think that's probably the shortest public hearing we've ever had.
It could be.
Yeah. Next item up tonight is unfinished business returning ordinances. The first is a resolution fiscal year 2025 fee resolution update. Just need a motion.
I move to approve resolution fiscal year 2025 fee resolution update.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stig leader?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item is resolution of intent to establish a CPACE program.
I move to.
Well, I just want to make sure that this is not the details of the CPACE program correct. This is just an intent to establish, because I didn't see like the details of it.
Yes, there'll be a public hearing on June 17th.
Sounds good, thank you so much.
You're correct.
Sorry. I would move to approve the resolution of intent to establish a CPACE program.
Second.
Motion seconds, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Stig leader?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And the last item, uh, under new, new and unfinished, or unfinished business, rather, is Lundie Boulevard Waterline Extension Project Recommendation of Award, and Jackson's coming up.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. Yeah, I apologize, you will have to actually listen to mine. Can't just approve it.
I move to it.
And if anybody missed it, he did look at me and say he turned his phone off.
I did. A triple, triple, quadruple confirm.
Somebody call him, quick.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of council. Jackson Fleschman, project manager, City Post Falls. Uh, here to present to you tonight on our Lundie Boulevard Waterline Extension Project, a recommendation to award. Little background in history, uh, remind the clock a little bit back to 2021 during our Outfall project. Um, this actually predates me a little bit, so Mr. Beecham here will have, um, some additional information if any is required. As a result of this, uh, Outfall project, there was a, an agreement, uh, requiring the city to serve water with, uh, two properties down where the, on the, the picture to the left where those residences are, there's two residences down there. Um, and as a result of our construction occurring adjacent to that residential well, there was an agreement established to, um, hook up those two residences to city water, later on down the road. Picture to the right, fun picture, Coffre Dam from our Outfall project. Um, so in 2022, we established an agreement which required the city to connect those two residences down on Lundie Boulevard to city water. Those two service connections are included as a part of this project. And as an addition included as a part of this project is a new fire hydrant down along Lundie Boulevard just before Iron Horse Loop or Circle, I believe. Um, that'll help improve fire flow in the area to, um, Arundel Estates specifically. Prior to this award, there was, uh, in a, a presentation to council where we had, um, purchase and easement acquisitions, which provided the alignment for this work to, to occur. Walsh Comer Engineers is our design consultant for this project. Picture's a bit hard to see, but that, over there to the left is the plan sheet, and then to the right is a bit maybe easier just to see the alignment of what we're actually doing. We'll focus on the one to the right, that way it's easier for you guys to visualize north and south. Um, so top of the, top of the picture to the right is the north, and along there, you can see, or it says Chicago, Milwaukee, and, and St. Paul Railroad Code, that's pretty much where the Centennial Trail is. Um, so it's a connection from down the Centennial Trail, kind of following that odd alignment, um, down to Lundie Boulevard and eventually, um, to where those services would, would connect. Um, and then to the right also, you can see the different easement and, and partial purchases of the, the properties to allow for, for this alignment. So public impacts here, uh, access to the Mobile Home Park will be maintained, absolutely. Um, there's going to be times specifically, probably a day or two within the project where there's only going to be one lane. There'll be steel plating, um, over it if, if needed. Minor to no impacts to the water service for those customers and minor to no impacts to the Centennial Trail. Construction noise maybe, but we're not actually going into the trail at all, or we shouldn't be. And benefits of the project include that fire flow increase to the Mobile Home Park as well as, um, a potential future water service availability to the Wave Park, um, whether that be drinking fountain or splash pad. I, I probably have a splash pad up there, but something. So for our bid results, we got our bids approximately a month ago. Uh, four responsive bidders, and, uh, this was an informal bidding method, um, under the $200,000 range. Big Sky was our apparent low, um, at 125,919, excuse me, and the engineer's estimate was 168,46. So we're starting to see a good trend with our construction projects coming in, um, lower than the engineer's estimate. Now that I say that, the next one I bring will definitely be over, but that's, that seems to be how it works. Oh, really good point to note, there was a typo on your guys' memo, I just wanted to point that out. Uh, the contingency request is not correct on your memo. On the memo, it's a 10% request. We're actually requesting a $20,000 contingency for this, um, so I wanted to address that, that way everyone's aware of what we're requesting. Um, and I'll use that as an opportunity to, I guess, explain why, um, or expand on why. Typically, we have a 10% contingency in our projects, uh, and that allows for unforeseen circumstances to be addressed without having to wait to get council approval and go through that process. Uh, here, 10% equaled, you know, about 12, 12.5. And we didn't feel that in the case where it was needed, that would be enough money. Speaking from recent experience of like just cost of valves, putting things in, it just isn't quite, quite there. Um, whereas if we did have a, a issue on site and something needed to happen, I think that 20 would allow us to get there. So the total request, to be clear, just for everyone, is 145,919. Um, next steps, next steps, we get, uh, contract documents and agreement to our contractor, establishing a date for construction, which we plan to have during the 2025 construction season. Questions?
Questions, Jackson? I would move to approve the Lundie Boulevard Waterline Extension Project Recommendation of Award.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Aye.
Stig leader?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Jackson. Next item, item up tonight is new business, and the first is a construction agreement for, for the Third Avenue Parks Shop Arcane Lot. Robbie.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Robbie Quinn, Parks Planner here this evening, seeking your approval on two contracts related to the Third Avenue Parks, um, Shop Parking Lot Project. And so we've heard recently a little bit from the facility needs study, um, that was done in 2021 for some of the public works facilities, and also part of that facility needs assessment was looking at the parks site, and some of the improvements recommended, recommended from that report were, um, increased covered storage, facility admin crew space, increased site improvements and parking lot. And so that's why we're here this evening to address the, the last one there with the paved parking lot, which currently is all, well, 90% gravel on our site. And so what we'll be doing is paving the internal portion, um, of the lot here and then where we connect on to Third Avenue. Um, and that'll include curbing, gutter, stormwater management, trash collection, the asphalt paving, which will have, um, vehicle, uh, lots as well as trailer parking. It'll include site lighting and landscape and irrigation, and part of that will also spill into Black Bay Park over here, so the current fence is right here, and a portion of the park will also be impacted with this project, um, which will be managing the stormwater in the new paving area. And all of this is set up for future expansion as well from, um, kind of our Black Bay plans, where this will all become future parking lot for Black Bay Park. But this is kind of the first step in getting to that point. So we went out to bid April 22nd and had our bid opening May 13th. We received two bids, um, from Le Riviere and Big Sky, both well under the engineer's estimate, and after review from our consultant, our Dura, and city staff, we recommend the award be, um, or the project be awarded to Le Riviere for $869,213. We are seeking a 15% contingency on this project, which is a little more than typical, I would say, for our park projects, we're usually in the 5% to 10%. However, this project is a 55-year-old site, um, lot of underground work. You can kind of see all these lines basically everywhere are either conduit, stormwater, or sleeving, so there's a lot of trenching, a lot of underground work, a lot of utilities happening with this project. A difficult site to begin with, because we're still have to maintain all of our operations out of the site during the summer, and so there's going to be a lot of kind of flip-flopping back and forth, so we're anticipating some struggles, some, some things that we're going to encounter that we don't know about, so hence the, a little higher contingency than I would say is typical. Bringing the total request for construction to $999,599, $95, and this will be paid out of the facility building reserve budget, which, um, was approved for this project for about, uh, 1.3 million for this, this fiscal year. And in addition to that contract, um, we're also requesting approval for the our Dura, um, consultant, um, oversight on this, which would be smittle reviews, uh, contractor pay apps, construction diaries, onsite observations, material testing, everything related to the observation of the construction. And that contract is for $121,785, bringing the total request with construction, contingency, and CA agreement to 1.121,380, and again, all that being paid out of the facility building reserve budget. So with that.
Nice to see another coming in under engineer's estimate.
Yes, and this one was, like I said, well under, almost 450,000, I think. And so, which was a pleasant surprise. We, we had a feeling it would be under, just given what, looking at some of the engineer's estimates and some of the trends we've seen, but we were surprised a little bit on how well under. But again, the two bids were close, so that gives us some good comfort there.
Chris, Robbie.
This is too big of a paving project for us to do in-house, correct? We have the ability to pave things.
Well, we, we, Parks doesn't, um, and obviously Streets is busy with all their typical maintenance and their own projects, so I would say so, yes. It's a, it's a, it's a decent size. It may look kind of small, but there's, like I said, a lot going on in this project.
And when I looked at it, I thought, that's a big parking lot. Just because of the dollar amount, that's, that's a very expensive project.
And, and again, like I said, a lot of infrastructure, a lot of underground work.
Yeah, not knowing what's underneath there, but also fuel prices and everything else coming up, I appreciate the fact that you moved contingency to 15%. Thank you. Other questions?
I would move to approve the construction agreement for Third Avenue Parks Shop Parking Lot.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Stig leader?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thanks, Robbie. Next item up under new business is Crown Reserve Phase One Construction Improvement Agreement.
frontage improvements of Bodine Avenue that would front what is Crown Point, yeah, Crown Point Sixth Edition. Back in 2018, Crown Point Sixth Edition cashed out their improvements for the south half of Bodine Avenue. That would be curb and gutter, roadway improvements, sidewalk, street trees. When they did the cash out, we also had them cash out 10 feet of additional asphalt north of the center line of the roadway. That would be your center line plus 10, which is a typical development requirement. At the time that Crown Reserve or Crown Point Sixth Edition went in, the City of Post Falls owned the property to the north. It was part of the land application site, and at that time, we weren't 100% sure the timing or the final configuration of Bodine Avenue. That was part of the reason that we cashed out at that time. Now that the Crown Reserve is going in, we'd like to see those improvements get constructed because we do have an obligation to build them since we collected the cash dollars, and it will complete the necessary improvements for the urban improvements. The cost to the city for this would be $246,000 and $2.50, and those costs would come from the cash out accounts that we have. So when we received the monies back in 2018, we put into our cash out account, and now we're going back to get the monies to cover the costs, even though they are higher now than they were in 2018 by a sizable amount.
Is that cash out account for all of the cash outs that happen all over the city, or is that number actually associated with what was cashed out by this developer for Bodine?
So the developer cashed out, it was around 80, 83,700 odd dollars that they cashed out in 2018. Since 2018, we have seen significant increases in construction costs. There is also a couple of items that were in the cost estimate back in 2018 that the city was not including at that time. There were some unknowns such as, as the developer for the Crown Reserve was going out there and doing some test holes, they found that there is a couple of pockets out there of unsuitable material that's up to seven feet deep. So there's some significant additional mass grading work that was not anticipated back in 2018. If we took the 2018 cost estimated, estimate, projected it forward, excluded the mass grading, which we hadn't anticipated before, or the irrigation system that we didn't include back in 2018, the cost would be about right for what we see, what we've seen in cost escalations. Additionally, in the cost estimate that we have for this, we compare the dollars to what the rest of the project is paying, and we also take a look at what similar projects are costing for construction in terms of was the cost per ton or square foot on asphalt, sidewalk, et cetera. All of those were checked, and the, the numbers seem fair compared to what the current market has.
But when you say that they cashed out for Bodine however many years ago, and that we are going to use the money that they paid in that cash out to pay for this development, that is not enough money. Is that correct?
So that is correct. But in our cash out accounts, we have about $800,000.
So we're using cash outs from other projects that were paid by other developers to pay for this?
And that has been typical over the years for us.
I just want to be clear of how the sentence was laid out. It did not reflect that.
Yes.
Yeah, you did say it was 246, and there was 80 some thousand dollars that this developer had cashed out.
That is correct.
Yeah.
That covers addendum number one. Addendum number two, giving a little bit of a look from the outside, addendum number two is for a proposed forest main. This is for the water reclamation for reuse water to get to the city's land application site. The routing for that future forest main is going to come up Chase Road and then is anticipated to go along the old railroad rights of way, which has now been abandoned for a very long time, and then go along Bodine Avenue to get to the city's land app site. The City of Post Falls is in the process of designing a portion of that forest main between Prairie Avenue and Fisher Avenue, which is south of here, and we anticipate the future forest main being, being constructed in the old railroad alignment with a future phase of the Crown Reserve property. Looking at a little bit closer, we are looking at a 20-inch forest main and about 1,126 feet of forest main in there. The total cost of this is $362,436.69. It would be paid for out of the water reclamation capital funds. We had the cost estimate for this looked at by both the engineering division as well as working with the public works department at, at that. The prices do seem reasonable compared to what the cost of materials are. A 20-inch forest main is considered a fairly large forest main, and it's not a readily available pipe size in the country at the current time, and other sizes in that range are also in somewhat short supply. Any questions?
Rob, who's the developer on that now?
The developer is the Jacklins.
So this forest main is just to serve Crown Reserve?
What was that?
The reason that we need this forest main is for?
We, we do not need this forest main at this time.
Okay.
We do not have a timeframe when exactly we would put it online and put it, treated wastewater into it, but it is one of those items where getting it in now saves us potentially the future cost of having to tear up the road and then replace the asphalt.
This is for the discharge water?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Continue motion.
I would move to approve the Crown Reserve Phase One Construction Improvement Agreement.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Plou?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thanks, Rob. Next item up, citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address accounts regarding city-related issues that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak, come forward. Seeing none, administrative staff reports. I'm assuming we have none tonight?
We have none tonight.
Mayor and council comments, the only thing, comment I would have was, is I'd like to thank Mr. Malloy for covering for me last week, two weeks ago. We came back from a nice little getaway with, and a flu bug ran through the house, so you guys would not have wanted me here, so thank you very much for covering me on short notice. Council comments. Seeing none? We do not need an executive session? Next motion is?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You need to adjourn, thank you.[1673.51]